So hard.
I can leave him. My wife's. We got double win.
Oh, my God.
Uh, she's going on.
We're stronger. You should have. Damn it, this is.
I got all.
Okay.
I wa- I want.
Thank you.
We end up finding a moment in time.
Shit, we do have picnic tables, so if you guys decide to come, we uh will set you up.
This is I just.
Stick that in the swag bag. So tomorrow we are stuffing bags. In that dream.
This is going.
Like that, yeah. Funny, yeah, cuz I didn't think of it until yesterday when I was riding my bike.
First one ended up being a little green, but you can.
Put some together and.
No, you get the.
Makes sense.
Good idea.
It's hilarious, like, you know, that it's media and marketing my whole life, and yeah. They called Jeff at library and goes, yeah, that's a brilliant idea. I said, yeah, I wish I thought of it last month, but well.
Oh, do I need to let her in?
Probably cuz.
We'll have, yeah. I don't see it popping up yet, yeah.
I don't know. Hmm, fine, I actually kinda took a chill day, had just had to do this thing and. And potatoes.
We've posted about it.
Yes.
Not yet, I can post about it.
It's fine. It's true. Sure, let's move, can you move like one of those?
On mic?
Step down, he's an alternate now. That he may step back up.
Okay, it is. Call the meeting to order. Okay, um, guess we'll do roll call first. So. We have a court, we have a quorum.
Uh, do we have anybody online? Nope, I think, do we have a quorum? I guess we do.
Looks like we do, we got.
Yep, great, alright, great.
Welcome everyone. Um, meeting minutes for March twenty first. The changes, comments. Questions? Your motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve with a second.
Second.
Motion to second approve the minutes for March twenty one. Question, it's on all those in favor, see if I'll be saying aye.
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 We suppose same sign, motion. Alright, moving right along, um. Full business?
Actually, public comment. I don't think we have any public con- do we have any people that wanna do public comment? Nope. Okay.
Okay, and I guess we'll jump right ahead to the full business and we have JJ to give an update on Earth Day Summer Festival.
Yes, it is uh come along really well. Uh, Dave has done a great job. Um, we've got the police department serving up food, Jeff at the library's been great. Mike has been a huge supporter of this as well as uh having Columbia Repeat is one of our big sponsors. Um, it's exciting and we're actually gonna, it looks like we're gonna get really decent weather, so I'm really happy, very happy about that. But yeah, and we've got some new sponsors, uh, we got T-Mobile is sponsoring this time and um trying to, we got quite a few. So um, cuz last year was pretty successful, um, so I think it's gonna go great. The outdoor festival is also coming along well, um, I've got a number of sponsors lined up for that as well as activities. Um, and I passed out to, here you go, uh, this is just a little postcard that I had designed today. Uh, it's gonna go into our swag bag uh for their Earth Day celebration tomorrow. And just kinda outline some of the activities we've got going on, we're also gonna have hiking, um, and other things like that. But that looks like that's gonna be really well received, we're very excited, uh, the forestry department, I met with the forestry department this week. And um, they are going to have a booth and they're going to be talking about wildfire safety. And they're gonna have Smokey the Bear there, which is really great. Um, yeah, cuz like in early June, uh, they hire all the recruits and so, so I'm gonna get stuck being Smokey. It should be a really a lot of fun, um, and uh, yeah, I'm just, I'm really excited. Cuz I think, you know, the uh, uh, the nonprofits that'll be there, which we charge nothing for and the, and the vendors that are paying. You know, are really keeping with the theme and then we're also gonna bring back the scapoo sauerkraut sandwich. Because apparently that was really popular during the sauerkraut festival. Um, but yeah, so I think it's gonna be great, so, and I'm very excited for uh, uh, Saturday. And tomorrow we're gonna be stuffing swag bags at the library after uh, at about one o'clock. So if anybody has nothing to do, we could use the help.
How many booths do you have coming birthday?
A lot. I don't know cuz pretty much I do the sponsors and then Jeff works with the nonprofits. So it's uh, we've got a lot of green tech talks, Columbia Repeat is gonna be doing a green tech talk. I know Western Heating Cooling's gonna be talking about heat pumps, um, we've got some of the nonprofits doing talks. So I think it's gonna be fun, we've got two bands, Paul Barlow, who owns Barlow Bikes. Um, he's got, he calls it the, they created a band called the Cater Hill Gang. So they're gonna open and then the decades are gonna play afterwards and everybody's doing it for free, you know? And that's what uh allows us to to do the level of stuff we're doing, giving away a bike this year. Uh, Columbia Repeat uh with their generous support, we've got green, uh, we've got a pressure washer, uh, an electric pressure washer. We've got an electric, uh, we've got electric garden tools. I don't know what they are, yeah, like a drill, yeah, yeah, so we got that uh to give away, means nursery's giving us a bunch of plants to give away. Um, and we have a ton of swag, so everybody, all the sponsors that are there as well as like the Scapa Bay Watershed. Will be uh, uh, having plenty of stuff to give out, we have three hundred swag bags, we'll be giving out to individuals and families. Uh, there'll be free food starting at eleven thirty, compliments grocery outlet, um, so, yeah. And the police department are gonna be dishing it up, so I'm, I'm pleased, yeah.
Right, any questions for JJ on either of those? Alright, good job.
Thank you, thank you, well, thank you, Mike, and you guys are all welcome to, uh, if you got time to come out and volunteer, we'll always, we have free pizza. On Saturday for the volunteers, so thank you.
I'll show up in the morning for at least three hours.
Well, that's great, yeah, we have, well, Fred Meyer's giving us free breakfast, Starbucks is giving us free coffee, um, so.
With my wife.
Oh, I appreciate that, that'll be great.
Okay, um. Business, Grabhorn Park brainstorming session. So I guess. Where we are with that is that um. Not gonna be able to make the grant, there wasn't enough. There was a lot of question about. Forward with that this year, and I think the timeframe has asked for this year. I think one of the biggest challenges Dave has, and I don't speak for you, is he's got a four million dollar project and how do you, how do you go after a grant? And um. Try to. Meet some of those needs and so. But I think really the. Purpose of this work session is to really talk about what can we do? We had seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to work with, what things can we do that would allow us to sue that next April? I mean, we got a year to think about it and consider what it looks like and um. What can we do that'll fit within that budget, knowing that it's really just about twenty five percent of what you need? So um, though there's been suggestions about, you know, maybe the all field be a future. Your phase, but what can we do in the short term, so that's kinda where we are, did I miss anything, Dave?
No, no, that's, you're right, um, so using the purchase price is the match, as Michael said, we have one more go at it. It would be um. The purchase price was seven twenty or seven thirty, that can be. Right proportion, yes, that can be eighty percent of it, so you can be bigger than that, we could probably ask for about eight hundred if we wanna go for the gusto, the full ask of. Program. Um, that being said, I think that we're kind of all on the same page, in the back of your packet, you'll see the exhibit that we had made from staff. Which coincidentally is along the same lines that Paul was thinking, the one prior to that is one that Paul sent us the other day. Um, the difference obviously is the configuration of the parking lot. I think in theory, we're looking at a reduced version of the park. Um, during the council meeting when the decision was made to kinda table this for a little bit. There was talk of doing something half of the parking lot kinda thing, but if we ever phased it in that manner, council's desire, which I'm fully on board with. Would be to build. Portion that would align with the bigger picture of the park, which is why the parking lot, if you compare this versus what was presented several months ago. Is in alignment, all we've ultimately done is remove the western half of the parking lot that's in the wetlands. So that when, if you built this, someday when you're ready to move forward, all of the alignment and everything is ready just to add on to that parking lot. Build whatever else we opt to build in the future. So um, I was just penciling out some numbers real quick, we don't have any firm numbers from the engineer on this. Cuz I wanted to vet this before we pay any money to them to do that. So I'm just kinda ballparking that I think that what you see on this plan not counting that pathway. Probably is right at seven hundred, give or take, we would have to do the entire frontage improvements along EJ Smith's to meet land code. Um, but I'm hoping that we could maybe use some street SDCs to help fund some of that cuz it's capacity adding to that road. We'll try to use every creative method to use other funds as we can.
Right.
Um, the biggest thing is, for lack of better terms, is how to make this project kinda sexy to the grant people. So what we need to figure out is, is what do we wanna put on the property so that there's an amenity? Cuz it's not likely, and Michael's got a lot of experience there, as mentioned, um, they want to fund something. And just funding a parking lot and a little path probably isn't gonna get us there. So we need to figure out what we could put on the field that's low cost, good gain kinda thing. I know that the mayor has expressed still the desire for like T-ball fields, which don't have to have backstops and things necessarily. So if we could level out the field, and that's why you'll see we still show a leveled portion of the field, we would do the dirt work in this project. Um, and then you would have the T-ball capacity, you'd have some soccer capacity while not a competition field. At least your youth could get out there and have some games, you could probably configure this with two of the younger groups running side by side rather than one full field. Or however, somebody decides to use it, um. You could just have community doing kickball out there, you could do whatever. Uh, the other thing that's been expressed, and I think Paul, you touched on this, and I would still love to see this somewhere within our parks, would be disc golf or something. You could put some baskets out here, I mean, we have some options, it's just coming up with something that we can afford, would make this useful. And maybe something that it, you know, like disc golf, if you put it out there, you could easily remove it, you're not out a lot of money someday if you opt to build. Ball on softball or soccer field or, or whatever the sports courts. So I think that's kinda what we wanted to brainstorm tonight was come up with some, something we can all kinda agree on that would be a good approach and maybe take that to council. For thereby in as well.
I just have a quick question, so um, I think it's really great to be able to use the sidewalk funds or the street funds. What, how much money is it going to take to do that frontage, do you think?
He's done, I was going through what they were kinda doing by square footage, probably three fifty to four hundred would be the frontage and.
Oh, wow.
Half lot, could be wrong, but that's where I'm, and that's.
And so that, so you're saying the parking lot could possibly come out of the uh, street funds?
No.
Oh, I see, just the.
Just the sidewalk.
Okay.
Along Smith Road.
I gotcha, okay. Okay, great.
And that does not include any pathway at all to connect to.
No, not for right now, um, I'm, I'm guessing just the parking lot and the frontage and the restroom, it's just right at seven hundred.
What is your estimate of the cost of that pathway, continuing pathway north from veterans?
Do a little math, um, I'm gonna say probably another hundred, you do a hundred, concrete's getting quite expensive these days, it's pushing two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a yard now, so. Well, concrete matches the facilities all the way through, it would, I mean, you could do a cheaper asphalt, but. It's not gonna be as robust for the life of the park, doesn't match suit, you'd be tearing it out to make it match veterans park someday.
That's one that's.
What do you think, guys?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how this golf in that area, how many holes can you really get in there, I mean, I play some disc golf.
Uh, you probably get uh.
Holes.
Seven holes in there.
And holes.
I mean, the thing is, is that it would be, they, they wouldn't be super long holes, but they'd be, be pretty fun.
Something, yeah.
Um.
Around the.
Um, you know, there's so many different layouts you could do, uh, the thing is, what disc golf came up is that, one, we know it's a need to the community. But secondly, we knew that it's a removable, easy removable, easy add-on, easy removable. That's one of the reasons why we said it could work here. Cuz um, and then it, it makes it more interesting as a plan too, it's like, okay, this is disc golf, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
When to build on that, I have this vision that you could turn entire veterans park waterfront into more disc golf, that you could play down the corridor.
Be cool.
And we're actually hoping someday still to build the bridge in the Concomly and you could play two holes on.
And that'd be really great.
So if you built that into the whole big scheme of things, it could be really cool.
Why don't we plan on that, is there?
I'm not opposed to that, I just, is the wetland mitigation included in that?
So we've been talking to our wetland staff, not a staff, but somebody, the consultant we use. And so if you look on that exhibit, there would be a small portion we would still have to mitigate, but I'm thinking we could probably do that for like twenty five or thirty thousand rather than the one seventy seven. It might be a little bit more cuz he did say that where the sidewalk is shown, you can see that's wetlands too, so we'd have to mitigate some of that. So we could be, you know, maybe forty thousand, but that's something that we could just pay for and just get it behind us on that. And then the remaining part, we could still work on trying to mitigate that out on the Cat Head property or the Commerce Park property. Um, we've had some talks with that same consultant and he went out and looked at it and he says there is potential to do something where we would do it in-house. Where since that's gonna always be a nature reserve anyways, just enhancing the wetlands out there is a good fit.
Yeah, that's great.
I, I would say I would, I, I like everything, I was kinda like brainstorming and uh, those are what popped into my mind as far as improvements to do now. And make sure that they are in line with what they would be as a full build out, so building the parking lot where you have it in the exhibit is. My opinion, the correct thing to do, um, restroom buildings is included as well.
Yeah, I've got that, yeah, and if you look, you'll see the restroom is down there where the house is, it's kinda overlaid on it. The house is getting to where I, it would have to go, it just doesn't make sense to have our tenants try to deal with it. The other thing is, is for the city's perspective, we're putting more money into it than it's almost worth, it's almost becoming a maintenance wash, which is what we receive. So the tenant knows that within the next year or two, you may have to send them, so.
Not going here, sorry to interrupt, underground detention, that is put, the location is cuz it's a low point of the parking lot. I'm just wondering.
Trying to understand, so he just got this to me.
Hot off the press this morning.
I haven't even had time to really look at it, I would assume that actually the, oh yeah, he's showing it under the parking lot, that's what that is.
I don't know that we would do that. Yeah, just.
I don't know how that's how we would approach that.
Versus, versus a stormwater detention facility.
It very well could be a detention facility behind the restroom or something, we, we didn't vet any of this part of the design, it was, like I said, literally, I've had this less than twelve hours. That's why it wasn't in your packet, so.
I, I don't know, I'm just asking the question cuz in my mind, it would be cheaper to do a uh. Stormwater facility basin, but if. Order to meet your full build out, storage retention possibilities, it has to go there because that's the low point of the parking lot and that's where everything's gonna drain in the end.
He may have been communicating with our city engineer because our city engineer has been pushing for a regional stormwater facility. To deal with water coming all the way down the road.
Okay.
I'm not sure I share that vision.
The landing spot for it.
Yeah, so I need a little more story on that, so I wouldn't, it's not bank on this yet, but it is a possibility.
Okay, and then I, I like the idea of grading out the field, if it's a rough grade, just to get it down in general. Because we, I think we need to, I think the public needs some more soccer field, ball field.
And I love the thought of having one that's just personal, that the public can use it or you, you all or whoever needs it.
Yeah.
Access to it, we're really sure.
Yeah, but. My, my one concern with this is that it doesn't include that sidewalk, that's what connects us to veterans.
Well, I just hadn't got far enough before we got to that point to add that cost in.
Okay, I looked at it.
We would definitely want to incorporate the walk into the project.
I looked at it, it's about eleven hundred feet, and if you look at the cost breakdown from three J. It looks like it's about eight dollars a square foot for their concrete.
If you have that, he may have actually priced out that entire walk already.
Yeah, I priced it at about fifty three thousand, but that's just concrete.
You know.
There'll be some grading.
But uh, so would, but would that be able to be used with the sidewalk or street funds? Okay.
I think the street funds are only within the right of.
The, the city does have a footpaths fund, um, not a lot of money into it, it gets one percent of the gas tax every year. Uh, we've been using that for the sidewalk repair program that's out there offered to the public.
Right.
But in all honesty, I mean, I, I think that. I would try to get it done on the grant personally and then use that as a backup. We could, I mean, we could possibly pour this sidewalk with our own staff, not in as big a hurry to get it done. So that, honestly, that's the easiest thing to build of everything on here.
Right.
Um, the other thing I guess that I've been kinda pondering on, if anybody uses Grabhorn right now, you'll notice that people are taking their dogs out there off leash. It's not a good scenario, but if we're not gonna use that upper area in the imminent future, we could expand on the dog park. Or create just another compound and that upper portion that people could use for the time being until there's a different use identified.
I think that's really, I think that's really important, I mean, people that uh have dogs, I have four. Um, having, you know, the ability to just take them out and let them run around uh is so important, and so I, I really am a big fan of that.
I really like that idea too, you just have to be crystal clear with the public that that is not overall envisioned.
Right.
Soon as you put that at a dog park, it'll be there forever.
Personally, I think.
To have a new spot where you're gonna replace that square footage.
Yeah, and.
Future.
It's hard going backwards.
Hard going backwards.
I mean, you know, we, we, we remember we're talking about deuce and the size of this last one and it caused a real ruckus. I think you're better off just leaving it alone and finding another place cuz we really do need another place for a dog park. I'm not sure where that is.
I understand where you're going, I guess I just would, if, if not that, then we definitely wanna do something with disc golf or something up there. Cuz just to have it sit idle would be a bad idea.
Fine with the disc.
Yeah.
I think that makes.
It could be ten or twenty years before we get back around to another big round of this, I mean, we just don't know.
Might be your shot.
Yeah.
I, I think you're very creative, um, I really would like to see us include the, the uh, path if we could. I mean, I really think that's an important selling point to, to the, the funders. And one of the things that I, I think we can maybe talk a little bit about that would be really inexpensive is that lower piece that's in the flood plain. You could kinda figure out how to fills, just a gravel path through there and tie in, tie into the.
Below here?
Yeah.
Uh, you're gonna be tighter to that than you think with this path, if you look at the topography, once reach F is done. They're actually sliding right up to the bottom of that in two spots.
It, a lot of it drops right off and, and I, even if we don't develop it, I think it's an argument for a, a, a selling point for the grant that accesses, you know, the whole. Natural habitat near creek and we can have maybe some kinda educational stuff about salmon or stuff.
Sounds like an awesome Earth Day project.
Okay.
Just, just so you know, we would try to.
Yeah, it is great.
Stand with um, what we've already been doing through veterans, and we actually try to discourage people from going out into that part. One, we don't want people swimming in the creek, so we can eliminate with E. coli that we discourage it. Um, but they've been trying to build back that riparian buffer along the creek.
Right.
And so that, kinda like what you say, there's some signage now, so you walk along the concrete, you can step out towards there. But then there's signs that identify plants and what the project is.
Nice.
I guess my point is, is I wouldn't encourage people to walk much below where the concrete path is gonna be.
So Dave, I'd like to talk about, just, just for discussion, the two different parking lot options. Um, so first of all, the parking lot option that I put together actually isn't my idea, it came from one of your designs, like one of the other, yeah. So I want everyone to know that, I didn't just put it there, um, but there's, there's pros and cons, I think, to both. Um, what I kinda liked about the positioning of the one that I put together is that it really frees us for the field space to be very open. Like in the, in the future, like if someone really came in and said, we're gonna turf this whole thing. You know, they, let's say someone had lots of money and they wanted to turf this whole top portion for multi-use fields, we wouldn't have a parking lot in the way. The same time, uh, I think you all know that if we do make a one major field here, we're gonna have to extend the parking lot anyway. That would give us, we'd have that lower spot and then we could move upward later if we wanted to. So I kinda like the smaller one, especially in the beginning, the one that's closer to the creek. Because it just seems like it gives us more flexibility down the road. Um, that's just kinda, that's just my opinion looking at it though, I love everyone's feedback.
I think, I think though, when we looked at that, the drawback was you couldn't get the depth for a softball outfield, it encroached. Too much into it.
Really?
Believe it or not, the property's not as big as it looks, and when you actually overlay the depth of a outfield fence. Really.
Yeah, we should check that, that is the case, I didn't, I didn't hear that in any of our discussions.
Cuz this, this plan never got very vetted, it just, it didn't really pencil out, yes, it, it existed, but then, and you looked at the bigger scheme. It, there's a lot of reasons that it just didn't, plus, what we heard was is everybody emphasizing that they wanted the parking down along Smith Road. So that's why we shifted everything back down there. That's what the community kept telling us is they wanted, everybody wanted to stay down by Smith Road.
I can't, I can't speak for my board, but um, you know, we have an economic development grant program and I can, I can see us putting some money towards part of this. Uh, maybe the trail and um, we could probably do what, ten or, ten or fifteen or something like that, um.
Oh, yeah, great.
That's what I was thinking, but the other thing is, um, I think we should hit up Al Portland, they helped us with, with um. The uh, Concomly Park, and they give us a lot, they gave us a pretty good deal on that uh, concrete, didn't they?
I don't remember how much they donated, but yeah, there was a, that was a good donation.
They asked me if they help us uh, donate some concrete for that and maybe Knife River too, I mean, a couple big, big. And you know, I'd be, I'd be glad to help you reach out to them or I'm not sure I need to. That might be something where we can help as a, as a, as a group, kinda help fill some of the gaps. Cuz it sounds like what you wanna do here and the money you have, even, even if it's just grading the field and. And uh, putting a trail in and a restroom is gonna be, in a disc golf, it's gonna be, we're pushing the seven fifty, eight hundred, eight hundred fifty limit, right?
Sorry, I was still trying to deal on, saying I wasn't.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty good, profound, but I guess.
The city does have a little bit of money, right? Two hundred.
Two hundred.
So target is seven hundred fifty because that's our match, but. I would assume the city would.
Throw some in.
Would go a little bit above and beyond for something critical as.
And then basically what I was saying is that, you know, based on the numbers you were presenting, seven fifty would buy all of this except for the trail. And what we're saying is maybe we can help you find that money for that trail and maybe the city has some money that they can use. But uh, I, you know, honestly, I wouldn't have any hesitation reaching out to Knife River and or to uh. Cal Portland and ask them for a twenty five thousand dollar grant cuz.
Yep.
Both uh have made, or have a fortune being in this community.
Mm-hmm.
I have another question, uh, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but either of these parking lot options that we were looking at. Would trigger half-street improvements along the entire frontage?
Possibly. Still waiting to get a final answer out of the planning if we have to do, because it's. Possibly. Still waiting to get a final answer out of the planning if we have to do because it's county road. It's not our road. They may make us go all the way up. We don't know, but it would make sense to go all the way up since we could use the street STCs. It just makes the entire. Property better if it's not gonna, it's not, it's not gonna be impacting the project itself.
Yeah.
And we might as well just get it done and behind us.
Yeah, okay. If, yeah, if it, if it truly does not impact that bottom line number. I was looking at it and I, I don't know, we're thinking the same thing, Paul, but if you were using the same driveway that's currently there. That trigger all those improvements that are needed.
So we talked about that. Um, the design engineer asked that question. The problem is, is you have road alignment with Fifth Street. That our engineering department really wants to target for our TSP planning. So if you look at that, it's hard to see, but that driveway comes straight out across into Fifth Street.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, um, any chance of county might. Partner with you on that. You were, you've had that, I don't know if you've had that success. I know you've had that conversation on other.
Even get them to do an overlay in this town right now.
Really?
I will say though, in their behalf though, is that they're targeting Elm Street right now. To do some projects. So they, they did that safe practice school study and then as I understand, they're trying to raise money. To do sidewalks on Elm Street from sixth to eighth. Getting them to do, make this a priority.
Makes sense.
Can always ask, but I wouldn't hold my breath.
I've heard they spent all their money from the road department for admin costs. Get a lot of state uh. Uh, gas tax money and for admin fee that comes off of there is, it's huge.
I, I guess though, if we're gonna deviate. Much and change the parking lot too, we need to go back to is the plan that was presented before. But we're still gonna try to build someday. Because you're, if you move that parking lot, you're, you're really. You're going back to the drawing board on the whole thing.
Uh, which parking lot? The one that you're proposing?
No, if, if you build, if you did what we're proposing, that aligns with the plan that's currently in the master plan. This is building the legwork of that. If you move it down here and you try to shift all of these fields. Then you have shut off the area that we had such a deep discussion to try to utilize where the sports courts were built. We'd never be able to get people to it.
Be able to get people to it?
Yeah.
You mean?
You expect them to walk from here up to the basketball courts?
Uh, have you been to any of the Portland parks? I mean, they don't have driveways to every field.
You want Grandma and Grandpa to?
Well, we have, we, um, okay, um.
I'm just saying, I'm.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if it's gonna be twenty years from now, I don't think we have a crystal ball. I mean, if you think that's how long it's gonna be, I guess that's.
I, I don't have a crystal ball. Um, I know that the picture is bleak right now.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I guess you're the.
Was is to stay on a built, a plan that everybody is vetted and then.
If you, if you feel that's more, if you feel that's the way to go, I'm all for it. I don't really, I don't, I'm not a big proponent of doing it the other way. It's, it's fine if you think that's the smartest way to go.
Yeah.
Everybody else okay with that?
Yes.
Well, what I would really like from you guys though is to sketch up or schematic some or Paul, if you want to play around with a disc golf, I mean. Whatever you guys want on there, if somebody wants to pitch that to us, some different concepts and then we could work that next month. We got some time on this. It's not like we gotta make a decision tonight.
I, I would defer to the talent on the, on the baller.
Uh, I would, I'd definitely.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that'd be really great.
So maybe you guys can kind of, you want to be part of that?
Sure, but uh, he's, he's more professional.
Okay.
He's the pro.
I'll take the first crack and then I'll.
That's great.
That's awesome.
If you're thinking, are you thinking disc golf? You wanna go ahead and when you're doing that, look at the whole like hazing it through veterans and in the Concomly maybe as a bigger picture.
Sure.
Concept.
Cause that might be pretty doable, pretty, pretty quickly, really. You know, the other thing, um, that I, I was gonna. Was I gonna say, lost my thought here? Um. Well, yeah, I think if we forward with, you know, with this concept, we're gonna have the, the. Big field, I don't think we really need to overly define that. I think it just me, needs to be defined as a. Open space for T-ball or, you know, uh, adult groups to play softball and soccer. Just keep it really wide open and say we, we have all these states and this is gonna fill all of them. And the reason I think you want to keep it. Uh, less than o- overly defined. I think you want to define where the big field is. But I don't think you want to start drawing lines in there, submit that as part of the grant because then that's where you're gonna have to put it. You know, because they'll, they'll hold you to that as you know. And I'm not sure you really need that level of de- definition. Maybe I'm missing.
Well, I guess the point of the matter, I mean, I don't see that as a problem because. Two years after the parks build, they no longer care if you take that out. Like if it is golf baskets that are drawn, drawn and built.
Right.
Those can go away. There's nothing they can do or say about that at that point. As lo- I mean, as long, we should build whatever we say we're gonna build. That's.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to really say, okay, this, this is where the soccer field's gonna be and this is where the little league field's gonna be. I think it's. Just an open field for a variety of different recreational uh, uses.
I mean, I. As far as, yeah, yeah, no, what I would do is just, we could, whatever you guys come up with, we could level this out and we could show an area that just says. Um, T-ball fields or whatever, but then if you guys draw some disc golf baskets or something out here. So that the grant funders know, hey, they're gonna build a disc golf.
I think that should be there. And then you should have that whole open area that says uh, future. Community recreation fields.
Yeah.
Broad and.
Yeah, that's great.
As you want to in the future. Sometimes, I mean, I remember we tried to make some butt patients and they said, oh, there you have to be like the grant, you know, you get some people that. Honor to those grants that are really anal.
I just think you'd be more successful if you say what you're gonna do out there though, so that they don't just think it's just. Why are we funding a hundred thousand dollar path on the creek? That's all they're getting.
I, I totally agree with you and I, and I think that having a multiple purpose field, i- i- it checks a lot of boxes, not just. One box, but a lot of boxes. I think it just makes a stronger application.
So yeah, I guess on that line, if you showed an area that just said multi-use sportfield and then you showed disc golf course around the other part of it.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Let me, yeah, I'm not even sure how it's, they connect over to the other part. Oh, good.
And then if we ever build the other plan or something, we've, these restrooms are easily moved. We may consider moving it up top. And the other thing is nice is that the utilities are already subbed out for the house for the restrooms. So that helps mitigate some costs and things, so.
And I guess the last thing I always wanted to just throw out is, you know, as you can uh, determine what the, what you think the real costs are for that trail. If you give us, um, and it looks like you're gonna be over the budget, let us know. I think it'd be kind of fun to try and help you. Uh, find that money. We'll just put JJ on it. We'll have a hundred thousand tomorrow.
I, actually, I was gonna mention, uh, T-Mobile reached out to me and said they have a small town grant program. Where you can actually apply for fifty thousand dollar grants for outdoor spaces and other things, so.
It's like pickleball.
Which I, it's fine, but you know, it's great. And they, they actually asked me if I would be willing to uh, do that. And I said, well. Twist my arm, but yeah.
Great, well, T-Mobile, T-pa- T-ball Park?
Oh yeah, there you go.
Pink fence.
Yeah, it's all for uh, rural communities. So they basically allocated fifty million dollars um. With a, a total ma- a total grant amount of fifty thousand for projects that are just in uh, communities. With uh, populations less than I think like fifty thousand. So yeah.
I think if we can lock in all these details by next December, we're gonna be sitting in a.
Yeah, we should be able to do it sooner than that, but yeah.
So do we have somebody online?
Um, yeah, Taylor is from the Scappus Bay Watershed Council.
Okay. Is Marissa online?
Uh, Marissa or Counselor Jacobs said that she might have difficulty uh, logging in. She's out of town.
I seen that she was not gonna make it in person, but okay. Well, other ideas about this?
Those pickleball, are we doing, is that for veterans or is that for Grabhorn? Has that been decided yet or not? Okay.
No.
Oh, nothing's, nothing has been decided. Um, there's been a strong desire for pickleball courts for several years in the community. Now that we're through this master plan, ten is to start building some of the things that are identified in here. Effectively this group, it would be nice if. Or you do that with me or just do it amongst yourselves. I don't care, but go through this and start to prioritize. Some of the amenities to share the wealth in the community. And if the next step is pickleball, great. If it's not, if. Committee doesn't see the desire, then we won't move forward with that. Um, but right now, there's. All kinds of options, but we need to be targeting probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a, be a hundred thousand or so at this point. Just know, I mean, the more we spend on that is the less we have for Grabhorn, but I don't really, I would hate to see us not do anything anywhere else. Um, things that we need to think about are like the play structure of veterans is getting aged and wearing out. At some point in the foreseeable future, we're probably gonna need to start replacing some of that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of items that we could start looking at doing to improve on what we have. I think heritage here is pretty good. Um, things I've seen in catalogs and I think would be great somewhere is they make like stainless steel hole boards. Where they're permanently mounted to the ground and then you just bring your own bags and toss and play. And I think little things like that. I know that. The committee talked before, I remember when Kira was still the chair, um, there was a desire for like possibly. Those big chess type sets and things out here. And so those are the kind of things we just want to start getting feedback from you. Help us, otherwise we can start picking things, but I think the desire obviously is the committee weighs in on that. I really don't have a problem with that, so.
Great.
Right now in the upcoming budget, there's fifty thousand dollars budgeted for those types of amenities. We can just do on a whim. Other than that, we're shifting the way we fund because otherwise we're never gonna have Parks money. Um, if any of you are paying attention with the current police discussions within the council. Um, if police department budget is really gonna start to ramp up into the three million dollar range, our Parks Department is. Be the first to get the cuts. And so it, we're gonna, probably gonna end up where we really can just mow the grass. It's a very bleak future for us unfortunately, as I've been listening to these discussions and I'm very concerned about it.
Who's proposing that?
That's just the direction that the council's been talking. You know, I would encourage you to watch back to some of the recent meetings. Some of those talks, cause that's, if they're, if they're pushing for this twenty-four seven, two officers around the clock coverage. That pushes the operations cost of the police department over three million dollars a year.
Oh.
Which is hundreds of thousands of dollars above its current budget, so.
The other echoing that or?
Well, I was gonna mention, uh, Dave and I and Tyler, was it a week ago or two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Weeks ago, we uh, went down to Chapman Landing. I've been uh, uh, talking to Next Adventure. They uh, interestingly enough, they. They actually advertised, uh, they were one of the first advertisers on the radio stations I had in Portland and they just started their company, so. Uh, I know Deke pretty well and so uh, and they're going to be at the Outdoor Festival. But one of the um, ideas that I uh, had floated was that if we could partner with Next Adventure. There's a possibility that we could get a temporary dock that is uh. Very low, um, and in fact, I'm not exactly, Dave actually, we all walked it, but basically you have a temporary dock that you put in from. Uh, May, then you take out in October, so then you don't have to worry about um, any of the agencies and. It gives people with kayaks or non-motorized uh, boats the ability to pull up. You know, hang out in the park, you know, have a lunch and kind of enjoy the scenery.
So what's, so what's next step? Is that possible? And what's the next steps?
It is possible. Um, so the next step is I, I, I reached out to Next Adventure and I said, wouldn't it be great? If like the kayaks that you're renting down at the uh, uh, you know, at the, at Scappus Bay. That they can pull up at different places and, oh, that's great. So um, Dave, what did you think the cost for that? Portable dock would be about if we had to guess?
I'll be honest, I, I haven't had time to.
Yeah, I'd say you look like twenty-five thousand, maybe, yeah, something like that. But anyway, so um, the other, the other side of it is, is that because now. Uh, that the Portland Audubon Society, which is now the Oregon Bird Alliance, um, I'm working with them. We would have an opportunity to do signage in Chapman Landing and then Dave came up with this idea where we would have it on like concrete. You know, they'd be concrete blocks, they'd be movable, but we could actually, you know, put information about birds and. And wildlife and all of that because birding is a really big deal. And one of the things that the Bird Alliance of Oregon really wants to start doing is. Have more outings um, along Chapman Landing as well as utilizing the trail with their members.
Okay. So where are we? Where, where, we're in the brainstorming. Are we finished with that? Do we have a fairly clear? Census of some of the things we want to see?
For Grabhorn?
Yeah.
Specifically.
You feel comfortable with?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna sit tight until next meeting, get some feedback, some sketches from you guys. If you all agree on that, I would say we take that to council. Get council's buy-in.
You wanna.
That same concept and that's the case, then we'll move forward with having it drawn professionally.
Okay.
The estimates and everything together and start getting ready to apply for the grant next year.
Hey, very good.
I have a question. So we've been talking about this as Grabhorn and uh, we might want to start thinking about. I mean, is this just Veterans Park extension? And then from there, you look at the holistic. Overall thing, when you're going for your grant, it's like, it's not just this little portion. This is the Veterans Park extension with. You know, uh, disc golf all the way through it and a pathway that goes up. And then it starts to seem a little more reasonable. I think when you look, even when you're going for a grant, it's like this is, it's much, it's part of a bigger picture. Uh, my question to you guys is that you think that makes sense? Um, as opposed, uh, as opposed to just keep calling it Grabhorn? Uh, do you think that we should be thinking about this as like just a, a greater Veterans Park?
From my perspective, it's Grabhorn parcel right now. It's not Grabhorn. I think that the council will be the ones to make the final decision if they're gonna name it. Individually, or if it is gonna be veterans, just an extension of it. I don't have an answer to what that's gonna be yet. That discussion hasn't been had.
I just think it's a nice discussion for us to have this serve up to council and all.
I think the reason it's been called Grabhorn Park up to this point in time is because if it hadn't been for. For Grabhorn, this would not be a park and he sold it for about fifty, sixty percent of what it was worth. So he, it was a, quite a. Generous, uh, cause we bugged him for about four, five years to say, hey, it needs to be a park. And uh, he. Said he wanted to buy a Starbucks up in Seattle and we said, we can come up with some money and quick. That's how that happened.
So is that, is that part of the thing that it should be called his name?
Well, I think so.
Okay, that's good.
I think so.
And, and I also think that having uh, a different name for the park shows we have more parks. We don't have a lot of parks.
You know, we, and I think there's, you know, maybe you call a park, there's something, there should need to be something that's called Grabhorn in there. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's Grabhorn Field. I don't know.
No, it's nice to have that, that background, Mike. Thank you.
They donated Grabhorn.
No, I a hundred percent agree with you. I think that the Grabhorns should be recognized in some manner. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I don't either, honestly, but just wanted to put that history out there. They also donated, what, twenty-five thousand to help renovate the ca- the, the canal. They're, they're a pretty amazing family. Generous, anyway.
I agree with you a percent.
So, okay, what do we have left on our agenda? We have um. Announcements and general discussions?
Can we go back to brainstorming though, not on just Grabhorn?
Yeah.
If, if, I could give you guys a little homework or something. This master plan is now on the website. If you guys are looking at it, great. If you're not, Charlotte's got it posted on there. I don't know where.
Um, I think wh- when I emailed all of you last, it, it included a link to it. Um.
Anyways, there's a CIP listing, what would, would be really useful for us for planning purposes, if the committee went through this. Created your own wish list, if you will, of priorities of what amenities and where you want to start planning. So that it helps me identify budgeting purposes and things and building purposes, where we're gonna go next. So that it helps me identify budgeting purposes and things and building purposes, where we're gonna go next stuff.
You want us to put that on our agenda to discuss next meeting?
I would appreciate that greatly, yes.
Good. All right.
If we could, you know, whether that's little things at each park, we just start to add or one playground somewhere or whatever. That's cute, but otherwise the money's not gonna get spent, or I'm gonna go pick something and then you guys are gonna be mad at me because I did. So I'm asking for your input upfront.
Oh, and Dave, um, so now are you gonna have the uh, fountain repainted for, when is that gonna be done? I have not, I.
Really good.
I'm excited, so it's there, that's great, okay.
I was very impressed.
Yeah.
Like their color.
Repicked it.
Really?
Yeah.
That's good.
Fix this, so.
Good, good, good.
Better and that's what they.
I'm excited, so how does it look at night?
Painting it.
Okay.
It just got put up yesterday.
Oh, good, good, I, good job.
I haven't been in town past nine thirty or ten to see it in the dark yet.
So when are you going to uh? Go ahead and re-start the. Phone?
It'll be functioning for the event this weekend, but I don't know if we'll leave it on or get off for another month or two. We typically try to wait till the rain slows down and the temperatures catch where somebody's gonna utilize it.
Right.
I think while it is pretty and cool, it is very expensive for us to operate because of the amount of water it gobbles up. So people aren't truly splashing in it and benefiting from it, it's very expensive.
Well, it's gonna be sixty-three degrees, so probably not a lot of.
Well.
But I assume that we want it on for the event, just people are, I mean, if you.
Yeah, I mean, well, the, the question, yes, we do. However, the question is, uh, if there's a lot of wind and the water's blowing in the booth, we'll have to think about that.
I'll be around, let me know when we can shut it.
Okay, yes, you saved us last time, so yes.
Just, just a little history, when we first. First started the fountain, one of the things that we, at Earth Day, one of the things that we talked about doing is trying to maybe kind of start. Have it be an annual tradition to start the fountain and invite, invite Michael Curry and he was kinda excited about coming to, you know, bless it one more time. And you know, that guy's, doesn't hurt to be on his good side. It's too late for this year, but um.
I, if you give him a call, we'd love to have him.
I could.
Yeah.
Probably do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, do you have anything to recognize this, that, I, I know nothing of this, so.
Well, I, you know, basically what we do is we uh, have a lot of live music, so we've got two bands. Um, I do announcements, we do raffles all day. Um, I'll be dressed up as Mother Nature, so the kids will love that. And then, um, but I also have people coming up wanting to talk, so we've got like the Chamber of Commerce is gonna come up and talk. And some of the other folks wanna come up and talk and so we'll do that, but it'd be great to have Michael Curry.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna try to make that happen, but I would encourage if you do, maybe invite the Rotary and rededicate now that it's refreshed or some maybe along those.
Maybe we should do, you know what, maybe we should do that for the Outdoor Festival. I think, because then we would have time.
I mean, Michael Curry was an Earth Day thing, but I don't know if it matters.
Yeah, I'm not sure it really matters, I'm just giving you some history, cause you know, I hate to start getting forgetful and you wanna.
In theory, it is making.
I didn't know, so yeah. Yeah, let's, let's shoot for the outro, well, I think if we can get him for the Outdoor Festival.
Yeah, that's you can do an extra Earth Day.
Yep, okay.
Ever.
Just to.
Short notice.
Just did get freshened up, so the timing is pretty good if you could get him here on short notice.
All right, Mike.
If you had a time that you'd want him to do that.
Yes, I'll make the time, I, it's, I, I am flexible.
It'd be. Eleven, eleven.
Didn't donate it, we had to pay for it.
I know, but.
He did donate a lot of this.
He did.
Yeah.
And designed and it's, he's pretty amazing, so yeah, if we did like an eleven o'clock, I mean, but whatever works for him. So, so basically from eight to ten is beautification and the, the, the highway cleaning and then.
Highway cleaning.
Well, good, I'm fine with that, so I misunderstood, uh, the beautification program.
You're changing your mind, I need to know.
No, 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 I misunderstood your email, no, I'm, I'm fine with that. So, um, and then um, starting at ten is the event, uh, just kinda FYI, between eight and ten, the vendors will be coming in, getting set up. Because everybody will be out hopefully planting and not being in the way. And then um, at eleven-thirty, we start serving food. Um, so one of the things we discussed was like, when the food starts happening, we're going to not have people speaking at that time. Because everybody's gonna get in line for the free food, but um, but yeah, and then we'll be doing raffles all day. And uh, two-thirty, we'll do the bike raffle, but we'll also be raffling off electric tools and all, all kinds of great stuff, so we're excited. So anything, I'm open.
Yeah, I, I think it's be pretty hard at this short a notice, but. I'll make a call.
Thank you.
Okay, any, we got uh, any other announcements or good of the order, anything that? Wants to share?
One other thing, um. You, well, I don't have one prepared tonight, but I could probably do it off the top. Do you guys want or care about park announcements, like just things all the works is up to?
Yeah.
Obviously, this park is getting our focus right now because of this weekend, we've got all hands on deck doing improvements here. Been preparing out on the CZ Trail for the planting project. Scapus Bay Watershed, I think that's gonna be. Project. Um, other than that, just trying to keep up on mowing right now, things are starting to dry out, things are starting to grow, so. By next month, I'll try to make sure we always have some.
Great, thank you.
The other thing that I would advise you to do is pay attention to this past week's council meeting where they talked about committees. It sounds like the council is making some changes with the new liaison input. Tried to be as involved remotely as I could and hear what I heard. But it does sound like they're gonna have the liaisons play a bigger role in some things, so I would just encourage you guys, if you didn't follow that. Be due, cause I think Marissa gets next month, she can't get you enough, I don't. Council's gonna play a bigger role, is my takeaway from it.
That's probably a good thing, it'll probably help build that connection.
Yeah.
Assets kind of in.
Marissa and I had a discussion yesterday about it a little bit and she's, she's all fired up and motivated to really do some things, so I, I think it's a good thing. But it may change the way the dynamic works a little bit, just as far as building agendas and getting like the council involvement, so.
I really didn't know her very well, I know she was involved with Grabhorn, but I never really knew her. I've observed her and I, and I. Kept her towards some of her, like the serving renewal stuff, I thought she was pretty reasonable, like was willing to step up and. Know a lot about her, but ready to be heard, that's good. All those are better than I do.
Uh, she's been excellent so far in council as far as I'm concerned, so I'm happy to have her as part of the team.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else that anyone wants to share? Um, May sixteenth meeting, I think it might be in Salt Lake City, so I could call in, but I probably won't. I mean, there's so much to do in Salt Lake, I just.
Yeah, you're okay.
So if I'm not here, JJ can run the meeting.
Yeah.
And uh, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Uh, well, just about the grant thing, so that we missed one here, so I guess the question is, is uh, in Charlotte, I guess, I mean, in general, we discussed. Being a little more active on grants and we didn't really come to conclusion a hundred percent, so.
Chris is gonna have input on that.
Okay, great.
She's got some ideas of, and it falls along with what we were talking about, because a couple of meetings ago, when I was trying to facilitate. Um, we kinda talked about that and how the committee maybe finds them. At some, narrows them down to the realistic things that align with our goals and stuff, so she's on board with that. So I think that the next meeting, you may wanna have this on the agenda again.
Okay. Yeah, I think uh, with my understanding that that was going to be a standing item, unless I hear otherwise, and then.
Would agree with.
Yeah, okay.
And I think Marissa was on board with that.
You know, as part of that, if we have time, I think one of the things to be really useful is for maybe next meeting, is to go to the state parks um. Page and take a look at the different grants they have, they have about five or six and they're pretty, there's really some opportunities there.
Yeah, I, I sent out a list, this is a while back, I found forty-five different grants that apply to parks. And a lot of them are trail-based, quote unquote, trail, but that could just be paths, connections, you know, that kinda stuff. So, and I have no problem, I'll send that out again to everybody if they a lot, missed the link. Um, but yeah, there's a lot out there, some are more uh, accessible than others, you know, obviously.
Which goes back to me being so important that you guys go through this list and we come up with the things that we wanna have to build. So that we look for the funding for it, because chasing the money, if you don't have a plan of what you're gonna do, isn't gonna work very well. Cause we have to make sure as a city, we have match funds if the grant needs them or whatever, so. Building both alongside of each other will be for sure.
Anything else anyone wants to share? Thank you all for being here, good discussion tonight and we're adjourned.